All right, it is 8:30 a.m. I'm going to call the meeting to order if we please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three in our agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. Any requested action items must be scheduled for a future meeting date. And I don't see anybody who signed in. Item four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Motion made in second. And any additions or changes? Hearing none. Any other comments on the agenda? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item five is consent agenda items. We have approval of the minutes with documents, approval of the travel requests with documents, approval of personnel action notices with documents, approval of cellular authorizations, approval of the human services report with documents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items? Any comments or questions on any of them? Hearing none, we'll call a roll.
Pierce, Boersma.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Jensen.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item six is routine business. We have approval of the claims. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the claims? Any questions on the claims? If not, we'll call the roll.
Boersma.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Jensen.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item B is department head reports. Before we get started with all our other department heads' reports, Karen Larson is here with the community health biannual report. We'll let you come on up, Karen, and introduce yourself, and we'll take that report first.
I am Karen Larson, the community health nurse. In terms of our biannual report, which is obviously biannual now, we had switched from January to June, so we're doing every six months. We did add something into the stats that you'll see, I think, based off of a previous request regarding some previous report numbers. I think LeAnn might have requested that at one point. Detail-wise, we did just put our WIC case load on there, so anything in addition to that, you know, we can take offline and add that on at a different time. We'd have to pull those reports. As far as the breakdown for our office right now with COVID, we have not ceased any of our programs essentially aside immunizations. We are doing some catch-up. For WIC, we haven't ceased any sort of lack in participation, or should I say lack in providing those services to those clients. We are considered essential, so we haven't, you know, stopped working. We haven't been out of the office at all. We have changed slightly as far as how we're doing it federally. We've been granted kind of some guidance to go ahead and do remote access, so telephone access, for clients. In terms of immunizations, that's a little bit more difficult after we were closed. Now we're just doing a little bit of catch-up, following CDC guidance as far as face masks and using the sneeze, the sneeze guards, increasing our cleaning schedule and making sure that we're blocking time between clients so that adequate cleaning can be done and drying time for those cleaning products. In terms of school services, we're kind of in the planning stages for the 2021 school year. We're getting a little bit more guidance each day in terms of how that is going to go. The rest of our pregnancy clients, we continue to meet with them monthly. A lot of times it's the remote unless it's a necessity that they come in for some reason. We've continued to provide our pack and plays and education regarding infant mortality. Our staffing is still, we're still fully staffed. We're still staying up to date on training. The COVID-19 information has been ongoing. As you guys know, every day it's a little bit different, a little bit more education. We're trying to stay up to date on that. We continue definitely to refer to the South Dakota Department of Health COVID-19 information line, and we've listed that for people. You'll see the community involvement that we have there. None of that has really changed. We do a lot of collaboration, a lot of working with different entities to share resources and encourage participation of people in the county. And then as far as upcoming things, we do have a federal civil rights review for WIC, and that is going to be in August. That was actually supposed to be this week. Brookings is doing the civil rights portion of that. There's just different breakdowns federally. They kind of go to different locations and check on the different portions that are, that are required, so. And then our Brookings County Pod is going to have an immunization event for flu, and that's going to be in November. So that's kind of things that are coming down the pipe for, for that, and we're getting additional guidance on kind of how to complete those events that are going to be coming down for flu season. Any questions?
Commissioner Pierce.
The pod in November for the flu, will that be at SDSU again?
I believe it's going to be at SwifTeL.
Yeah, it will be.
Unless that is changed, which I have not heard that it is.
Thank you. And thank you for updating the report. That's helpful.
Yep.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much for your report, Karen.
Thank you.
We'll move on to...
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. First thing I'd like to report on is the con... I'd like to start on chip seal on August 3rd. So we're going to be advertising that and getting the note out for that, and we're setting up signs now to start notifying that we're going to be chip sealing County Road 7, County Road 9, County Road 4 and 5, and County Road 35 to South Henrichs. So those are our chip seal routes. He predicts it's probably going to take him four to five days. So we'll be in and out. And then in the meantime, they're responsible for the first initial sweeping, and then I'd like to let it cure for a week or two, and then we'll go back over and, and cover it with the fog seal. And then, once we get, we had a pre-con meeting for our striping, and we're kind of scheduled towards the mid to late part of September for our striping, and that, complete that project. Our asphalt project, Bose Construction, just started paving on County Road 8 yesterday. They finished up County Road 4 last Friday, so they're moving along at fairly decent pace, so hopefully we'll be seeing that wrapped up at the end of this week. And one more thing I'd like to touch on, our bridges south on 77. I know we have a change order later in the meeting, but I may have to go meet with Elkton Township. But we got to, just to touch briefly on this change order that you guys will be looking at, as I mentioned in the last meeting, the reason for this change order, this project experienced continued high water, much like I reported a lot earlier this year, which delayed the process for the bowl structures. And then, once the water receded enough in May, ran into obstructions, like I mentioned, as far as trees and old concrete abutments. And then those, like I said, were 10 to 12 feet below the water, and these obstructions slowed the progress. And then, one thing I wanted to make sure we, we knew, the only net monetary change order so far is just that $42,526 was for the heating when they did the south structure. So this, this change order is just an adjustment for time, shifting the new completion date to the 1st of November. But no monetary change order as far as money goes.
So the 1st of November guardrails, asphalt, everything will be in place by?
That's the intention, yep. Because once, uh, once they get complete, that deck needs to sit for, you know, until it gets strength, so minimum of 14 days. But, uh, so it'll have to sit once they get that deck, deck done for a while. So there won't be anything going on out there unless the contractor, or the subcontractor gets out there to do the dirt work and the grading.
End of your report. Any other questions for Brian?
End of my report.
Not? Thank you very much. Vicki from Finance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just to kind of give you an idea what we've been doing, we're still working on budgets. We're starting to get some levy requests in, that type of thing. Otherwise, just keeping busy with motor vehicles and work, I guess. You received in your packet the finance officer's report for June, and we have the four be it noted items, the auditor's account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives totals, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deed statement of fees collected. And also, for the surplus cash analysis or fund balance analysis, we're at 37.28%, which is right on target for what we have been for the last 10 years. So we're, we're looking good there. And otherwise, if you have any questions, that is all I have for you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Thank you, Vicki. Move on to Marty. I guess he's way over here this time. Sheriff's report.
I'm going to be quick unless you have any questions concerning the jail. Over the weekend Pioneer, as you may know, Pioneer Weekend was canceled due to COVID, but they, the convenience store on the corner there just outside of city limits said that they would hold some events there, and they had a band and so forth. But everything was free, but it went smooth. We had no, no problems there. Also, we've been having complaints at Lake Goldsmith, kids and, and vehicles raised in Kane. And then we got a tip that there, somebody drove a snowmobile into the water, in which there was. We found it in there. We, the local tow companies didn't want to mess with it, so we had to get bunkers out of Arlington to pull it. That was about $1,200. Ends up being a brand-new snowmobile. It's one of those fancy speed ones. Anyway, it was stolen out of Jackson, Minnesota back in January, and we do have suspects. We, it's no fun unless you photograph it. Cellphones are great. Anyway, got a picture of the dude that ran it into the water. So anyway, we'll be sending that over to the state's attorney as soon as we get a confession. Anyway, other than that, I don't, unless you have, we've been busy, just like every other department, lots of things going on. It's, the jail stays busy. So far, we've not had any, any COVID issues back there, but we always got somebody in the quarantine cell and, and get one out and put another one in just to be safe. So, but so far, we're doing good. Like my sign.
Like the sign.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Hearing none. Thank you. Bob Hill, planning zoning and emergency.
Good morning. For some reason, the thunderstorms have found Brookings County after missing us for two thunderstorm mornings last night. Rainfall totals anywhere from two and a half inches over by Elkton, 3.5 down by Sinai, and we had some pea-sized hail. And some power outages south of town, but the utility companies got those back up pretty fast. In my part of town in Brookings, the lights flickered, but they, they didn't go off. And I got to thank 911 Center. They kept calling me and, and telling me when those was issued, which is fine. It allowed me a chance to put it on the message board that the county uses. And if you're not signed up for that, I encourage any citizen to sign up for that because we can put those messages out. And we also had another one on Saturday. On, the one on Saturday, the thunderstorm warning was kind of odd, so I called the National Weather Service, got more information on them, and let dispatch know what the, where that storm was, was heading to. Friday and Monday, I attended NACO meetings online. The Thursday, 16th and 9th, I went on the radio and we discussed the Census 2020. The citizens need to know, I believe it's August the 11th, the Census Bureau is going to be starting in Brookings County knocking on doors. And it's still not too late. You can still call that 1-800 number or go online Census 2020 and get your stuff knocked out. Otherwise, you know, you can, you can not answer the door, but the Census Bureau will keep coming and keep knocking, and they're, they're fine just sooner or later. That's their job. We had a, we did test our iPOS. That's the, through the company called AlertSense. We tested that this month. And we had our PPCC meeting, and as Ms. Larson said, we are going to have a full-scale exercise with the pod in November, and that's going to be our dry run for when they do bring out the vaccine for COVID-19. Because we'll, the procedures that we test in November will be the exact same procedures we use when the vaccine comes out and early part of next year, hopefully. And so that's always good training for us. And last third, last time we had a meeting, we had a countywide siren test. All of them worked except one, and they've got the, in the city of Brookings, they've got the electrical company working on that one. And in the last week, Banner's has been up doing some survey work on the Madera Township drainage project that I signed up, or resigned up for. And it didn't give me a lot of notice the first time. I was able to contact the landowner, and they sent the survey team out to them. And then the next day, we worked with some other landowners to get them back out there. And so it looks like most of the surveying is done now. Now it's all up to computer work and the lady that, that does the environmental paperwork. And on the rainfall, we had pea-sized hail last night. It's the only thing I've been reported. Like I said, three and a half to, and less inches in Brookings. Any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Pierce.
On the, the pod, you know, the last couple of years was at SDSU.
Yes.
Well, will that be open then to members of the community to get flu shots there?
Well, we're still working on that. We, that will be released.
Okay.
I would have, would have to assume that's going to be the case.
Still working on. And will there be a charge for that then, do you know?
Typically not. If, if the pod is involved, we, typically that's when the state donates the vaccine to us.
And then, if there comes out a vaccine for COVID-19, and, and this is a dry run for how we would handle that, are, do we have arrangements then to do that pod at SwifTeL also, or would we be looking at a different location? And I know we don't know that's down the road. I'm just curious whether that's kind of what the plan is.
The SwifTeL Center is our main site in Brookings. Then our backup is, is the high school, which we've exercised in before. You mentioned South Dakota State University. That's what's known as a mini-pod.
Okay.
That's not our main pod location, would never be our main pod location. That's strictly for the state and students and things like that. So we do support the mini-pod, but if we're, if we're doing our main pod at the SwifTeL Center, then SDSU basically has to provide the people for their mini-pod. We have some of the equipment for them, and, or the equipment for them in our pod trailers, and we shift it over to, to the mini-pod. But we would still be able to run our full pod at the SwifTeL.
Those two mini-pods, the last two, there were about 800 people approximately served. That's what my recollection is. Do you have a number that you're thinking on this, or?
Not, we, we have not started on the November exercise.
Okay.
August, the PPCC pod meeting in August has been designed to do that. We didn't want to, we didn't want to totally confuse the members of the PPCC pod committee, the, the plan too far ahead, because they, they're more concerned with getting schools started and things like that. But now, in August, schools and stuff will be, be started, and it's time for us to start planning the pod. But I'll be more than happy to keep the county commission informed of the procedures as we go along.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's kind of, Bob, a fluid situation, basically, is how I would describe it. We're not exactly sure how the pod would be activated, if, if it's a COVID vaccine response or something else. Is it going to use the pod, or is the, is the federal government going to come in and say, we're going to do all of it, and then the pod's out, so to speak? So it's kind of a fluid. We'll still have the exercise, I'm sure, because we need to do that anyway to keep our pod on.
But to keep our state, see, we get state grants, and this pod in November is strictly for that state grant.
Yep.
I'm the one, I'm, I'm the chairman of the PPCC now. So I'm the one saying it's going to be the dry run for the, for the vaccine, which, by all means, Commissioner Bartley's correct. We don't know how the, the COVID-19 vaccine's going to be given. But all I know is since 2006, we've been practicing to do it, and we'll keep practicing until we're told not to do it.
Congratulations on your position.
We will be ready, we will be ready to handle it if we're required to, but there are a lot of communities and areas that are probably not. So then that affects how it's going to be done nationally. So we just have to, we have to wait and see.
Go with the flow. But we'll, we'll be ready.
It'll be fluid.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Jacob, equalization.
Morning.
Good morning.
Is, Department of Revenue has released the top dollar for the productivity method evaluation on ag land. Crop top dollar this year is going to be at $3,621.23, meaning if you have a 1.0 rated crop soil, a perfect crop soil in Brookings County, that's what the valuation of that soil will be. That reflects a 6.39% decrease from what the top dollar was on a crop soil for 2020's assessment. The non-crop, or the pasture rating in the top dollar is $2,166.58. That's just about a 5% increase from what non-crop valuation was for the 2020 assessment. That should give us, once these numbers are applied, and they have already been applied, our average per acre value of ag land in Brookings County is $22,223. Now, all that being said, this may be irrelevant because Department of Revenue has also made available brand-new soil tables and soil survey information. Brookings County is currently using soil survey information from the early 1980s, so it's, it's outdated. There's new information available. Jim Sampson up in GIS has the layers. He's currently overlaying them on Brookings County and snipping out at the parcel level. So every parcel has a new soil inventory, which will have to be kind of hand-jammed into our system for evaluation. So we're going to have to touch nearly 7,000 parcels, putting new soil inventories in. Department of Revenue has given the state, every county in the state, up to three years to implement these new soil tables. But because Brookings County has GIS, and we have the manpower to do it, we should be able to get it done for the 2021 assessment, which, once that's done, they will give us a new top dollar, making these top dollars irrelevant. But that's to be determined. We have to get the numbers on the books and run some comparisons for them, so.
Would you say the pasture number one more time?
Top dollar for pasture for 2021's assessment, tentatively speaking, is $2,166.58 per acre.
Thank you.
What was the average again? 22, 2?
22, 23, and 19 cents. About 75% of the soils in Brookings County are crop-rated.
Any other questions for Jacob? Any other questions? If not, thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dustin, we'll have your BCOAC report.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I'll start off with attendance. Since the last meeting, archery range, the gun range, we had 110. On the 15th of July, the sheriff's department came out and did some qualifications in the gun range. Rochester Armored Car was in on the 12th. They did some qualifications. 4H has held two dog show practices since the last meeting in the archery range. And they've also done some public presentations, and they had a fashion review on the 13th and 14th. For their fashion review, they all, they had basically set up every hour people would come in, so they tried to follow the COVID guidelines. And they also used the archery range in the classroom for that, just to spread out. Michael Kilmer and I have scheduled three more basic pistol classes for the rest of the year. On Thursday, July 23rd, we're having the safety picking. The 22nd train's coming out. We're going to look at that classroom unit again. They think that the unit is the right size for the room, but we're going to do some trial and error stuff to see if we can get it, get sucked that humidity out. I contacted Dual County on those surplus items we talked about last meeting, and we're going to schedule a time to get those transferred over to them. Safe and Secure, we have full monitoring now of the, the building, so if fire alarms go off in the middle of the night, somebody's coming. And our segment also aired on Kellaland, and then Ashley Bigger came out, that local artist, and painted some stuff on our windows just to try to promote the place a little bit. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mike?
Veterans Affairs.
Public Health.
And a public county.
I just come to tell you that the COVID money that had been... ...is getting low. We're getting people that are calling back into us. So we'll probably see a little pickup on that. The veterans side of things has been very busy, and probably a few of our veterans are passing on. But otherwise, our office has been keep, has been keeping busy, and things are going quite well, I believe.
Any questions for Mike? Hearing none. Thank you, Mike.
Everybody, so far, we are really close to nine o'clock. I think we'll do our nine o'clock item, which is an action to remove Resolution Number 20-42 from the table. Is there a motion to approve to move it from the table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. And any comments on removing it? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Excuse me. An action to approve Resolution Number 20-42 is a resolution... is getting low. We're getting people that are calling back into us. So we'll probably see a little pickup on that. The veteran side of things has been very busy and probably a few of our veterans are passing on. But otherwise, our office has been keep has been keeping busy and things are going quite well, I believe.
Any questions for Mike? Herring Dunn, thank you, Mike. Everybody, so far, we are really close to nine o'clock. I think we'll do our nine o'clock item, which is an action to remove Resolution Number 20-42 from the table. Is there a motion to approve to move it from the table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments on removing it? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Excuse me. An action to approve Resolution Number 20-42 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of HVAC systems, installation and service with related products and supplies through Sourcewell. So we're looking for some comments. Main motion as amended by Boersma and Krogman. Any comments or questions? Commissioner?
I called Ryan Vanderbilt from Associated Consulting Engineering yesterday and chatted with him. He was the mechanical engineer who did the 2012 mechanical systems update across the street as well. And so if there were further questions or the commission wanted an independent third-party review of that new chiller system, they're available and willing to do that for about $2,000. So just wanted to make sure that everybody had that information if we feel it's necessary. If we don't, then we can certainly move forward.
Questions? Commissioner Pierce?
As we look at this unit that's going to be installed over there, have there been any issues with the current one being big enough to cool the facility?
No, I and Tom Hunstead from Johnson Controls is here and can help probably answer some of those questions. But my understanding is that it's just kind of at its use has seen its useful life, basically, and needs.
Please come on up to the microphone and introduce yourself and then we'll ask you questions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. Johnson Controls has a zero-arm policy, so we are required to wear the face mask.
It's fine.
There are no current issues with that chiller. It's becoming age-related. The refrigerant is no longer available. It's not produced, hasn't been produced in the U.S. since 2015. So there are two chillers over there currently. This, one of them runs and then on the warmer days, the second one, which is probably about 30 years old, kicks in. So we've got some, you have a little bit of redundancy there. But on the hot days, the smaller chiller can't keep up.
Which chiller are we replacing?
We're replacing both of them. We're going to take them both both out, put one larger chiller in.
Questions on that? Sorry, efficiency will still be?
Efficiency improves because of the technology over the last few years. The condensers have changed, the heat exchangers have changed, the efficiency's actually improved. So I'm actually increasing the size of the chiller, but I'm using the same electrical system, not having to change anything.
So the increase in size is to accommodate for the two that we're losing. But in terms of a sort of in-kind replacement of overall sizing of the system, the overall sizing of the system is the same. It's just that right now we have two units instead of one.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we're going to take out two units and put one of equal size in there.
And in terms of this, the way that that system runs for stages of cooling, those those really hot days, it would just kick into that higher stage?
Right. Six stages of cooling.
Perfect.
Any other questions? As far as installation is concerned, what sort of a timeframe would we be looking at and how much time would we? Let's not have 90-degree days or a week and a chiller.
I'd like to do it come this fall.
Okay.
You know, if we want to do it September, October, you know, late September, early October. That way, yes, we may not be able to start it this year. We'll take the warranty, carry it into next year and do the startup. Because the startup will start when warranty starts. Or, excuse me, the warranty will start when the startup is in effect. So.
All right. So we're still efficient until we do the project. So it's not an emergency. Okay.
So what you're saying is if you installed it in September and we didn't use it until next May, are the 90 days from date of installation warranty does not apply?
Does not apply. We'll we'll move that over into into May.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No problem.
Any other comments from the commissioners? I assume we're ready to move on that resolution? We're ready, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Can we read back the motion as amended prior to calling the roll? Or no?
Yes. As a matter of procedure, Jenna, do you have the motion as amended to read back?
Um, if you give me just a minute here, I'll have to pull up the minutes.
Okay.
Just to help Jenna, I know the motion was to approve the resolution with the one change in the taking out recently. Recently, in the second whereas in this resolution that's in front of you, it said had has the word recently gone. That was removed. That was the amendment.
Perfect, thank you.
So it was to approve that resolution with that amendment.
Just a water to read it or we're okay?
That's great. I just needed to be reminded of that amendment.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we'll call the roll.
Can I start over on the roll call?
Yes, you may.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we've got about an hour before our presentation. Next presentation's regular business. Item A is an action to approve Agreement Number 20-40, a contract with AMP Electric to add a generator feed with power transfer to the BCOAC. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Comments and questions? Dustin, do you have any comments on this one?
So it this all depends on the generator we get as well, since we technically don't have one to run the whole building. But like I talked about last meeting, Proustman's has one, Bose has one, and then Trane or HVAC, they have them in Minneapolis. So basically, we'll have the switch to hook up a generator with enough cord. But there there possibly could be a little bit of additional hookup, depending on the generator that we go with. But we wouldn't know that until that time, if that makes sense to everybody. So basically, it has a five-wire cam lock in to go into the building and then bare wire on the other side is what we're doing.
And so will that additional happen in an emergency situation? I mean, if if that's kind of what we have it here for is emergency. And we're not buying a generator to sit there for 20 years if we don't have an emergency.
Correct. And I already talked to Brian at AMP. I said, this is, I mean, we do have a generator, but more than likely, that would be during a summer situation. And when it's 40 below, that one wouldn't run the HVAC system.
And so say if we had an emergency situation, then we had to make calls to Bose or Proustman and they could bring it over, hook it up immediately, but that there he would have to probably be there to make the adjustments.
Yep. And then, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And then if we were to use Bob's, the 70 amp one, we'd have to shut off certain breakers in our break room to allow that to run the lights and the outlets in the building. Just wanted to explain that part to everybody.
I'm gonna, this is a scenario question more than anything else. If we have a problem out there, it's going to be a community-wide problem.
Yep.
And at that point, everybody's generators are going to be requested. We don't have a priority.
Yep.
Unless we have an event or people in the building.
That's why, a couple meetings ago, I brought this up, because yeah, technically, we don't have a permanent generator for that facility. And I know we always talk about the what-if, but I I do agree with adding the switch because that's one step closer. But yeah, it would be during an emergency, we may have to run around a little bit to find a generator.
There'd be a lot of competition for the generators that are available, is my point. So we spend the money and we buy a generator at some point in some budget somewhere. Otherwise, this really isn't effective.
Do we not have two generators? So Bob's, but aren't there, isn't there one at the highway as well? There's not.
No, ma'am. That is my dr-
Oh, got you. Okay, so we have one.
And I don't know, Bob, if we had a citywide outage, would yours be available just for the BCOAC? Or would you anticipate you'd have to use it elsewhere?
Well, the priority would be my emergency operations center.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So wherever I locate that would be, and and obviously, I work with the county commission to make priorities, community-wide priority. But I would prefer it to be with my emergency operations center, wherever it's located. And if it's not needed there, then by all means, we, in emergency management, we always prioritize where things are needed. And of course, we would be ordering another generator in, but it might take time to get here.
Would it be wise to dedicate the BCOAC as your emergency operations center so we know the generator goes there?
Well, it is my, it's my backup emergency operations center.
Yeah.
It's already, that's identified to the state. So if crap hits the fan and we need one, we'd put it on a priority list and state with assistance in getting one in. And we'd use the little one until it gets here.
Again, I'm just tossing out scenarios of where the generator is going to come from if we actually have a citywide outage for extended periods of time. That's just a question. Just a statement. I don't think we could rely on that, I guess, is my point. I don't have an objection to getting it wired. I think that gets us closer. But if we actually ever needed it without having our own generator, I think it's questionable that we would ever be able to use it. So.
Swiftell doesn't have one either, right? So, I mean, we're going to have to, if it's a citywide shutdown and you open up Swiftell as a space, we're going to be need to call in somewhere anyway, you know. There's one here at this at this building, right? There's one built in, it's not movable and it's staying here. Right?
That used to be one of my assets too, but we went ahead and mounted it here permanently.
So I I think we're going to have to get them in from somewhere anyway for any situation that is going to be a citywide situation.
Long term.
Long term. So Swiftell was going to probably be the first one that comes in, whether they come from Minneapolis or Sioux Falls. Same time, if we needed to open up a secondary place for emergency, you know, for a long period of time, you know, we'd have that option to get another one in at that time. And so my, I guess my thought was, I worry about spending the money and not using it, having it sit there and on a what-if, and I understand the what-ifs. But in my experience, I guess, I'm not sure we've been through one of those what-ifs in the last how many years where we've had to shut down the city and we've had to have two different places for people to go. And so, you know, my my thought tells me that we don't need to spend that money there on a what-if. That hasn't happened in the last 50 years. I don't know, I'm throwing numbers out there, I guess, and just kind of. So that would that would be my, but having the switch there allows us to order something some from somewhere that can maybe get there in a couple of days, like Minneapolis or something like that. So. I'm comfortable with the switch. I think that's a good upgrade. I'm just not comfortable with buying a another generator for a what-if that may not happen.
Yeah, and I agree. When we first started this, I mean, we were looking at $100,000 for a permanent generator. To me, that's a lot of money, but I do think this is a good idea if you guys down the road want to use this. But yeah, I just wanted to let you know, we just have the hookup, but we don't actually have the generator. Yeah.
It's more than likely going to be a weather-related incident, tornado that would cause that type of an outage through town. And at that point in time, you'd have all kinds of people wanting to help us. So we could probably get a generator at that point in time. So I don't have a problem with the hookup. As I said, I just want people to understand that it's not the ones you identify at the local.
Wow, that's, I didn't want
They're going to go somewhere real quick.
Yeah.
Probably not going to go out there right away.
Yeah.
All right, I know the hospital has its own and the police department has its own. So any other questions or comments? Commissioner Pierce?
The hookup that we're talking about, and you said it might have to have some electrical work done depending on the generator. Well.
Correct. Basically, you'll just have bare ends on
Uh huh.
Basically, the end that goes into the generator.
Uh huh.
And depending on the generator we get, he'll come out and hook it up and then we'll kind of know.
Will it will it be set up so that it would work for the typical generator we would get or?
Yes. Yep, that's what we're we're trying. Yeah. We didn't want to put a plug on there for something we didn't even have. It's why he's going to leave the bare ends off of it. So we'll, yeah.
Any other questions?
So I'll go ahead and get that done. And then it may, he said the power's going to be down to the place for a day. So I'll have to facilitate that with GFMP and 4H and see what a good day. I was thinking maybe a Monday where he could come and hook that up. So it may not happen within the next month, depending on how busy GFMP and 4H are. But so I'll call him and let him know that we'll go ahead and do this.
Any other questions? We'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is an action to approve abatement Number 20-31, an abatement request made by Brenda Pratt for parcel Number 37350-00300-004-00, in the amount of $326.81. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments? Any questions? Jacob, a report?
I just wanted to explain, this was an office error on our part. She had filled out the form for owner occupied tax status and the reduction, the form was in her property card in her office, but it was never applied in the tax system. So this is two years worth that she would have qualified for owner occupied, but it wasn't given to her.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Herring Dunn, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is an action to approve South Dakota Department of Transportation Construction Change Order Number 6 for Project BRF 6319, parentheses, 0017-4. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. And this was the one you explained to us earlier, Brian. So are there any other comments or questions on that? Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll call the roll.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is an action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County for reimbursement from the City of Brookings and Brookings Municipal Utilities for the ESRI agreement. Receipt number 00509056 and 00511824, in the amount of $26,666.66. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Comments? Report, Stacy.
We entered into an agreement with BMU and the City of Brookings for with Esri for GIS services. This came about last, I think it was maybe last year, beginning of this year. But we, the county pays this initial agreement fee to Esri upfront. So this is $13,333.33 from both the city and BMU reimbursing us for this. This will be an ongoing agreement. However, due to timing, the revenue was not anticipated for for 2020. So the, so we made the full expenditure. This is just putting the reimbursement amount back into the budget. Moving forward, the revenue will be budgeted.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item E is an action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County for reimbursement for double payment from office peeps for office furniture and community health. Receipt number 00515653, in the amount of $339. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a report?
This was just miscommunication. We actually ordered some partitions for community health to help with separation due to COVID. We believed our office was paying that since it was on our office peeps bill. And then the folks at a community health paid off an estimate as well. So it was caught and office peeps reimbursed us right away for the double payment.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Any comments? Herring Dunn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item F is an action to approve a request to fill vacancy for equipment operator in the highway department. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Brian, any comments?
Cam's last day was yesterday, so the sooner the better.
Okay. Good. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item G is an action to approve the appointment of Angie Schmitz to the Housing and Redevelopment Commission to a term ending December 31st, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments?
This was advertised earlier this year because this was one of, I think this is the la, this is the last position on this board that had that kind of mid-year appointment. We were trying to get everybody to a December 31 term end. So we had posted this earlier but didn't receive this application. Then this came in on July 31st. So we had posted this earlier but didn't receive this application, and then, then this, uh, came in on July third. So, and this is the gal that was in this position previously. So this would actually go through twenty twenty-five, it's a five-year term, and this would be the last position on this board to get them all to year-end terms.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Action, uh, item H is an action to approve a conflict of interest policy for Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, comments, questions? Any comments or questions?
Oh, yeah, I guess I have a question. Um, I've done a little bit of research here, uh, along with Commissioner Pierce here. The one thing I think we're missing in this, um, legislature had a serious discussion on one of these a couple of years ago. Um, and one of the things that is missing here, I think, is, uh, of exceptions is consumables. Um, like a meal or something like that is not addressed in here. Uh, so in the last, number five, outside compensation, gifts and gratuities, and you have accepts, exceptions, and one of the last ones, receipt of social amenities worth less than a hundred dollars. That's similar to what the legislature did, but they also added in there, uh, consumables. And that would be considered, uh, a, a meal, um, a beverage, you know, anything like that that was be consumed across there. And I, maybe it's in here, I just didn't see it, but, um, for example, if, um, you know, Bob Hill went to a PPP meeting, D meeting and stuff, and, uh, and they were, uh, had lunch there and had subs or something. Bob couldn't have it because it would be considered, uh, uh, enticement or something, or conflict of interest. Um, and I don't think we wanna go that far in, in this conflict of interest, so.
Could we just add consumables as part of that list? Would that take care of it, or is there additional language that you would prefer to add?
The way it reads in the state statute is any food, comma, entertainment, or beverage, uh, provided for immediate consumption. Now, I don't know that we need entertainment in there, but I think myself, I'd be comfortable with any food, um, with any food or beverage with a value of less than a hundred dollars because we're using that anyway, provided for immediate consumption.
And where would you insert that?
It would be a bullet point under number five after receipt of social amenities. And then I had a, another concern in that the state statute addresses contributions. Let's say Vicki's running for reelection and somebody wants to contribute to her campaign, or Dan's running and somebody wants to contribute to his campaign, or I'm running and somebody wants to contribute to my campaign. The state statute has an exception in there for that, that type of contribution. Um, and I wonder if we need to have that in there. How they have it worded, and I, I, I'm not real comfortable with the wording, and maybe somebody'd have a better thought on this. The wording is any contribution to a political committee that is regulated by the Federal Elections Commission or under chapter twelve dash twenty-seven. And I have to say, I didn't look at twelve dash twenty-seven to know what that is. But, um, maybe we could simplify that, and y'all might have some thoughts on that, but, um, maybe we would just say any contribution to an election campaign. I, I don't know if that's specific enough, but I do think we need an exception in there for that.
Commissioner Pierce, what statute is that?
That was twelve dash, are you, you're asking the one I'm reading from?
Correct.
The one I'm reading from is two dash twelve dash eighteen, and it defines what a gift is. Um, and it's in the lobbyist's section of the, um, SDCL. Oops. It has, they have eight different exceptions. I don't know that necessarily any of the rest of them, I thought that we needed to have in there. Uh, but maybe the rest of you would like an opportunity to look at those eight exceptions. Are you able to pull that up, Stacy, or, or no? And I'll, I'll say that I'm opposed to number three, and I wanna explain why. And I was aware of, of this statute because I, I sit on, as your liaison in public affairs, and there was a lot of discussion about this two, three years ago, about these two statutes that were adopted at that time. And the any service or event to allow, to assist a public official in the performance of official duties would allow that, that particular one. For example, let's say that, um, our weed enforcement officer wanted to go, uh, visit a site in Honolulu, okay? And somebody would give her a free trip to do that. This would allow that. Do we want that kind of thing allowed? That, that, it would be excluded under our current, how the, um, conflict of interest is written. That exclusion would allow that? I'm only picking on Misty because she's not here.
But you're saying, so you're, you're not in favor of three, but you're in favor of two and four. Is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm in favor of some version of two. I don't think we wanna word it exactly like that. And I do, um, think four, yes. I don't know that the other things are necessarily applicable, but maybe somebody sees something I'm missing.
Are you suggesting then that we?
Well, the only thing I, I would guess I disagree with number four pulling out entertainment is, you know, if you, we go to a city Brookings meeting and invite all of us there, and there's hors d'oeuvres and Murph and Friends is playing in the background or something like that. We can't say we can't go because we can't be a part of entertainment that's provided to us. You know, I would say entertainment, if it's part of the, um, you know, the event that's going on, that, that would be like, okay, we gotta look at what it costs to have Murph and Friends. We have to divide it out by so many people there, and this is what they're giving us, I guess, a portion, whether it's five bucks or a hundred dollars or whatever, but we couldn't take it, I guess. So I, I mean, it's kinda splitting hairs, but, you know, entertainment, I wouldn't mind keeping in there, um.
I just didn't know about entertainment for immediate consumption, that just didn't make sense to me. I don't have a problem with leaving it in. What I thought about were football tickets.
Yeah. And that's not for immediate, though.
Right. That's not for immediate consumption, but it's less than a hundred dollars.
Yep.
Okay? So.
Unless they give you the tickets at the game.
Then it's immediate consumption.
Then it's immediate consumption.
Yeah.
The immediate consumption in their entertainment didn't make sense to me. I'm okay with leaving it in, but that's what I thought about. How does that work? How do I give you entertainment for immediate consumption?
I guess so. So.
Can't take it with you.
All right, so, uh.
So what I have right now is adding under bullet point five, um, another bullet point to read any food, entertainment, beverage with value less than a hundred dollars meant for immediate consumption. And then to paraphrase number two of that codified law, any contribution to an election campaign.
Right.
And we could add those, we can amend the policy and add those now, if you're comfortable with that.
Do you want that in a form of amendment, or, or agreeable that that's the document? Change to the document?
You could do it as an amendment, I think, to the motion.
We could do it as an amendment, if somebody wants to make that motion.
I can make a motion to amend adding, uh, fourth bullet point, which you said of the.
Adding any entertainment, food or beverage with less than a hundred dollars meant for immediate consumption. And then another bullet point, any contribution to an election campaign.
Yep. That's my amendment.
That's your amendment, is there a second?
Second.
There's amendments made and seconded. Any comments or questions on the amendment to the document? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries on the amendment. Now, the main motion as amended is, go ahead, Commissioner Pierce.
I just, I just wanted, if you were gonna call for the vote, because this applies to our department heads as well as to us, and I was wondering if anybody had any input besides us, that, before we vote.
Raise your hand now or forever accept this document and policy. Seeing none, are there any other comments or questions on the policy as amended? Okay, we're gonna vote on the policy as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. All right, we are moving right along today. We're gonna go right into, uh, Commission Department Director's report.
The surplus analysis for June was included in, included with my report. You can, uh, did the ten-year average, as Vicki had mentioned, it is about as close as you can get to our ten-year average, so we're in, we're in good shape there. Um, really, I don't have a whole lot either coming up, other than some, uh, dates that I'd like to talk about coming, uh, coming up. Safety week, we are, uh, in the middle of safety week. We did our severe weather drill yesterday, and that went well. Um, I believe you all did sign up for the safety picnic, as Dustin had mentioned, that is Thursday, and you all signed up to come at noon. Um, Bob will be there talking, uh, giving his safety, his safety talk at that, so we will see you all there. Um, some other things coming up, 4H achievement days, and I haven't gotten much information on what that exactly looks like, but it is August third through the sixth. The CDI golf outing is coming up August thirteenth. Uh, and I guess I'm wondering, do we have a team for that? Just, do people wanna participate in that?
I'll play.
Mike wants to play.
Very well, but I'll play.
Anybody else?
This is best ball.
Yes.
Good. Then I'm fine.
You're in?
Yeah. If you're depending on me to win anything, you're out of luck. That's basically what I'm saying.
Do you wanna play? Ryan?
Yeah, I'll play.
Okay.
He's holding out for a more talented team.
It's four person.
Yep.
Okay, we, you wanna play? It's, we have four now, if Angie's playing. What?
They take more.
They would, they would take another team, we'd have to put together another team. Okay. All right. Um, and then I sent out some information yesterday about the fall convention coming up, September thirteenth through the fifteenth. It's down at the Ramcota down in Sioux Falls this year. Something new this year is they're doing a golf tournament the Sunday before, um, while we're on the topic of golf. Um, you would have to pay, and I would need that check to send with registration, but individuals, I think it's like thirty or thirty-five dollars. And you just register for the event, and then they put you with a team. So you don't get to pick your team and go and golf, they put you on a team. So if that changes anybody's attitude towards it, you're gonna be golfing with people that, from different counties all over. So let me know if you're interested in doing that, and we can discuss getting payment to me, because that will need to be sent in when we send the registration in. I am not gonna ask right now about whether or not if you plan to attend, but I'll be looking for that at the next meeting in August, if your plans to attend, and then if you want a hotel room in for one night or two nights down at, uh, down at the Ramcota. And again, September thirteenth through the fifteenth. And that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? Stacy, the State's Attorney's Office report, Dan.
Nothing needed.
Uh, let's go ahead. We do have some, uh, correspondence besides from Dakota Farms, those are D and R reports, I guess, more than anything else. We'll start with Commissioner Pierce's report.
On July ninth, I attended the Public Affairs Committee, we had a lot of. And, um, that would be my report.
Commissioner Boers.
Finished our budget revenue Saturday. Ninth, we did bid openings here with several of you. Uh, July thirteenth was an attendee at the Naco Town Hall event. The fifteenth, we had an ICAP board meeting. Um, Friday, we did a quick debriefing call with Henry Carlson, with, um, Commissioner Bartley and Stacy. And then yesterday, the Naco Annual Meeting and a Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Board Meeting. So it's been a busy two weeks.
Thank you. Commissioner Krogman, your re.
Had two, two meetings, uh, in the past. TSP, there, the consultant that was hired for, uh, that, and we've sat, sat down with, uh, members of Beta and also the Brookings School District to discuss a new bus garage, and that's what the consultant was hired for. That's very good meetings. Um, they've, uh, put together, we met yesterday again, so once on the ninth, and then once yesterday for a couple hours at a time. Um, they're putting down conceptual drawings, um, and also, uh, very rough estimate of costs to make sure both parties understand what, if things fell into place, what their obligations would be, uh, for the facility. And so, um, um, yeah, I, I mean, I think the conversations have gone very well. Uh, I think it's a really good project. TSP really likes the project because it's kinda innovative, putting two government entities together to try to, uh, you know, maximize efficiencies of transportation. Um, save tax dollars, uh, at the beginning and during, you know, of operation costs and all that kinda stuff. Has room for expansion, uh, be a nice-looking building. So there's a lot of positives, I think, and so a lot of it will be contingent upon receiving a grant on Beta's side, um, and, uh, and how that works out. But, uh, very good meeting, uh, good start, uh, very positive, uh, start to that. It going, again, this is probably a, a long-term thing down here, but where that brings us into effect is us purchasing the current Beta facility that's on, uh, there. So, um, I think we've got two hundred thousand already kinda set aside earmarked for it. Um, but, uh, anyway, that's moving forward. Um, again, just the beginning, long ways to go yet, but just an update that it seems to be looking pretty good. And, uh, obviously, the school board will have say in that if they want to continue this and spend the funds and do all that kinda thing. If they have other priorities, they may go a different direction. But, uh, you know, in essence, uh, there's potential for a seven million dollar building that, um, you know, we'd be paying, you know, for Beta as, as a grant, uh, would, would almost fifty percent of that building be a grant. And so there's potential for, um, you know, the school district getting an eight million dollar building for two million and, and, you know, Beta coming up with another million for their match. So, just, you know, some good options, potential, but still a lot of hurdles to get through, so. There, there will be a public meeting for that coming up in the near future. Um, I guess one question, Stacy may get a request to maybe have that public meeting up here, um, because of the capabilities of recording and doing that kinda stuff. Um, and also the room to be able to have billboards and distancing and all that kinda stuff. So, um, I kinda spoke out for us that we may be able to accommodate them, but, uh, hopefully that's okay. Uh, but Beta really doesn't have a spot for it, and, and actually, the school district, they'll be busy getting ready for school and that kinda stuff. So I thought it might take a little off their plate, so. But I'm not sure of the exact date for that meeting. TSP will let us know. So, that's it. Any questions on that, let me know.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Uh, also attending the budget hearing. Went to the bid openings for the jail expansion. Last evening, I did receive a call from Elkton Township, uh, with concerns to a pipeline being installed in, uh, Moody and Brookings County. Uh, they were concerned about their roads and, uh, the proper permits that were needed. Uh, they were unaware of, uh, they had not given any permits, and was wondering if the county had. and was wondering if the county had given any permits to this dairy. I contacted Brian, and I informed him he had not. They're setting up a meeting today to discuss, uh, uh, road crossings. There are prob, potential to cross a couple county roads and numerous township roads. As I looked through my packet last night, I did see we had correspondence received from the state, uh, regarding this, uh, uh, project, and they, they do have a permit, uh, approved through the state, but, uh, they still need to get their township and, uh, county permits, I guess, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. July 7th, uh, also attended the budget hearings. I think that really was... And Stacy for putting together. On the 9th, um, the PPC meeting with, with, uh, it was on, on virtual meeting with Bob Hill. Uh, also, the, attended the jail bid opening that day in, in this room here, and it was full of all the chairs, so it was good to see a lot of people interested in our jail project. The 13th, uh, listened to the National Association of County Officials NACO Town Hall virtual meeting. Also on the 7th, or the 20th, I, with NACO Business Meeting yesterday, was about a two-hour meeting, if I recall, uh, that we listened in on. They elected their national officers, passed a couple resolutions. Uh, there was no, uh, immediate election competition for any of the offices. One of the candidates for second vice president had withdrawn about way back at the town hall meeting, so, uh, it went pretty smoothly. As virtual meetings go, it had all the usual little glitches that you have on those things, so if we have those in the future, maybe we'll have all those figured out. But it was, uh, it was interesting anyway, and we have a new president and board. And on the 17th, as, uh, Commissioner Boersma had stated, we, uh, had a phone meeting with Henry Carlson Company on the post-bid meeting. That completes my report. At this point, the only items we have left is our 10 o'clock meeting, and unfortunately, we cannot start, because we posted it at 10 o'clock for the public, so we have to take a slight recess there. I don't think there's enough time to go. So we'll take a 20-minute recess and come back at 10 o'clock for our, uh, 10 o'clock scheduled meeting. Without objection. We'll take a break.
All right, it's 10 o'clock. We'll reconvene. We have a 10 o'clock presentation of the jail expansion remodel bids from Henry Carlson Company. And at this point, we'll turn it over to Dave and you can introduce your cohorts there.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you, commissioners. Well, as you know, we've been working for months on this detention center project. And we've been working shoulder to shoulder with the county representatives and the design team of BKV. And we ended up getting a design that everybody was comfortable with. And so we took it to the street and we took bids on July 9th. And so what we're going to present today is the results of the bidding. A draft of what our GMP would look like. Some of the bid tabs, some of the backup, some of the information that makes the GMP. We're going to let Mike talk about the alternatives that we bid, which are parts of the project that I don't need to accept. And we're going to let Chad finish a little bit here with schedule. And so with that, we'll just start with the first page. And see if you'd like to just scroll down to the bottom. This is actually a summary page. It's actually, should be page seven of your booklets. And so what this sheet is, is basically a summary of all the successful bids and bidders and the totals. And this is what we would propose as a guaranteed maximum price for the construction portion of this project. We would propose a GMP of $15,93,303. And I want to point out that that number includes a contingency of $439,611. And that contingency is for unforeseen that could happen on the project for the contractor's use. Any unused contingency at the end of the job is returned to the owner, 100%. Okay, so that is what we're going to propose as a GMP. If you flip to page nine, I'm sorry, 11. We took the bids, we bid three alternatives. I'll let Mike Ralston identify that, what the alternatives are.
So again, like Dave said, the GMP is based on the base building and we did have three alternatives. There are additional scope or enhancements to the base project. Alternate one was adding a cast stone reveal to the precast of the exterior facade of the building. Sure. Is that better? All right. So again, alternate one is adding a cast stone band to the exterior facade. So the exterior facade of the building, the skin, is precast. And what alternate one does is adds a cast stone band in lieu of a relief. Alternate two, in the base bid, the precast is to have a limestone texture. And how they accomplish that in the base bid is they put a form liner when they're producing the precast. And it creates the same texture appearance as limestone, however, it is not true limestone. Alternate two provides a true limestone veneer, so they cast limestone into the panel in lieu of just that form liner. Then alternate three addresses the existing building. In the base bid or the base GMP, the existing metal panel facade is painted. So that sloped angled facade or sofa would stay. In alternate three, we remove that, replace a new metal panel, and also re-roof the existing building. So that's the three alternates. And then obviously, the respective cost is at the bottom as we see on the screen here. So alternate one is $15,302. Alternate two is $85,029. Then alternate three is $547,283. And again, like Dave pointed out, we do have a 3% contingency on each of these items as well.
Any questions on those contingencies? Everybody understand what they're for? Commissioner Boersma, I think you'd made a comment that if we choose alternate one or alternate two, the other one goes away? Are there all three?
No, you can accept all three.
Okay, so they're intertwined, one and two.
Two completely different things, yep.
Moving forward in the proposal, pages 15 through 20 is the official bid tab of all of the bids received for this project. And what you will see on these pages are the bidder's names, the amount of their base bids, the amount of their bonding rates, and any amounts that were attributed to an alternate if an alternate affected their division. And so essentially, we received approximately 84 bids on 36 packages. And so, once we receive the bids, Mike and Chad have spent a lot of time, what we call scoping or equalizing. And that is, they're just going through bid by bid, calling the bidders back, and making sure that the bids that we're accepting are in compliance with the bid documents and that they are complete. We would not recommend awarding to a bidder who missed work scope, for example. That would be unfair to the project and unfair to that bidder. So the results of this is what carries over to our summary sheet. And so, we have recommended the lowest responsible bid in every division. And those are the numbers that are carried over to the summary sheet. The bids were received on January 9th, I'm sorry, July 9th. They were, the bids are good for 45 days. And so, essentially, our GMP is good all the way up to August 21st. At the end of 45 days, the bidders would have the right to withdraw a bid. I think that it's important that you guys know those dates. And so, from July 9th, 45 days takes us about to August 21st. I'd like to let Chad talk a little bit about schedule and then I'll just close with next steps.
So, yeah, my name's Chad Nelson. I'm the senior project manager for Henry Carlson. I will be the project manager on this project. And just to give you a little update, so as we've been talking here, we took the bids. We've established this number. Once you've accepted and approved and allowed us to move forward, then we will sit down and meet again with each one of these subcontractors and establish a full, realistic schedule. If you remember in our presentation during the interview, we talked about buy-ins from these subcontractors. And that's the next step for us with them to establish this full schedule. In the bidding documents, however, we did provide what we call the draft schedule. It's basically our best guess and based off the information, both with the documents and the information that we got from you all earlier. I think in those discussions, we had established a 21-month duration for the project at that time. And so we've kind of laid that out on paper for these subcontractors to look at as they're bidding, going through the documents and bidding the information. And again, with that said, and again, not knowing when that start date would be, we had to kind of just pick the date of August 10th is what we established in that draft schedule. And then that took us to the, you know, early or late spring, early summer of '22. Again, 21 months, so. So again, that's kind of where we're at. Once we get the approval, we'll sit down, you know, if we all need to extend past that August 10th, then of course, we will adjust the schedule to reflect that. And then go into, like I said, the buy-in meetings with our subcontractors and establish that detailed schedule for everybody's information and kind of that roadmap to get to the end, so.
Any questions about the schedule?
Just as soon as available date, if we could agree to decide to move forward, how fast the schedule? Groundbreaking, what do we look at? Two weeks, three weeks after that?
Yeah, actually, once you have approved the GMP, the next step, then we actually formalize the documents. Where we actually would submit to you formally the A133, which is a GMP amendment, which is... And we would also submit our performance and payment bonds to you. And while that is ongoing, then we'd be sending out subcontract agreements to all of our trade contractors. So realistically, I would say three weeks.
I mean, I have them all basically ready to go now that we have names. So it's just a matter of plugging into the actual contract for them as well. So I would think a week, we would have at least those initial contractors involved, our earthwork, site clearing, all of those people, we could get them in, you know, pretty quick. You know, if they know it's coming, if you give us kind of an idea to say, yeah, we're getting close, so I can make them aware. We can make things happen pretty quick and start clearing, clearing the site and then...
I guess that's one of the questions I've been asked by the public is, when are you going to start construction? Obviously, we have an obstacle we need to overcome yet. But if we overcome that obstacle and we get started yet this fall, I'll just say this fall, are we looking at a project that's going to be difficult to work through the winter on? Are we going to get enough work done to move forward, continually move forward? Or are we going to get delayed because of, it's the winter's project? We don't have enough work done.
I would say, again, you know, the biggest thing that we would, if we push back into the cold months, affects our concrete foundations, you know, it takes a little more of an effort to get that done in the cold months. But there's a lot of means and methods of being able to do that in the cold months as well. So it just, maybe would lower the production, you know, so those people that have bid it now, based on the schedule that we had to provide, you know, to give them an idea when they can be ready to go. We're pushing that borderline already, so, right, if we went much deeper, but it all can be done. And we will, you know, continue and get it done, but yeah. So officially, the sooner we get it decided that we can get started, then we can do more of that work and before it gets too cold, so.
Questions or comments?
Commissioners, can you all hear me by any chance?
Yes, Bruce from BKV, we can hear you.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, commissioners and friends from Henry Carlson. Good to see you all. Just so you know, your video froze up when you first sat down, so I, but I'm still hearing everything. But the only question I had is on, there were two bid categories that I didn't see any pricing on. And I just didn't know if that was in part of your buyout assumption or how you were handling that laundry and window treatment. I thought we had specified, I thought we had in a denim addressed the laundry equipment. But Mike, maybe correct me, maybe I'm incorrect on that.
No, Bruce, you are absolutely correct. I'd like to direct the board to page 23. And right at the top of that page, you see a title called allowances. Now, we had several categories where bidders did not submit properly, so we were unable to read their bids. But we went out and we got numbers for what I would say the holes that we had on bid day. And our GMP is full. It does not have any holes. We have included the following allowances in our GMP. $1,400 for semisless precast steel embeds. The fire stopping and joint sealants of $84,000. Hollow metal doors, frames and hardware of $64,805. Interior building signage of $1,316. Laundry equipment of $20,955. Window treatments of $1,690. And then if alternate number three were selected, demolition of $30,000. So, these categories, bids were either not submitted or were submitted improperly and we could not read them. But we did reach out, so we're confident that the values we're carrying are the values we can go buy this out for.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Commissioners, that was the only question I had. Other than that, I think it looks great.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Comments or questions?
I think I handed something out, but there are some changes. So this kind of totals up where we're at right now. If we accept all the alternatives, the estimate for soft cost is about $1.6 million. For a total of $17.3 million. We have right now savings, but we have set aside $15,333,985. That includes the $7.4 million bond plus additional dollars that the commission has been setting aside over the years for this project, which means we're about $2 million short, just over at this point.
In the process, we probably need to decide is the alternatives. And some value engineering you may bring to the table for us at a later date? Or do you have any figures there that you would suggest today?
We don't have any figures that we would suggest today. But we did put together a list of items for potential cost savings. And I use the term value engineering lightly. I like to use the term cost reduction. And I use the term value engineering lightly, I like to use the term cost reduction. But we have, we have actually assembled a list of items that if we're looking for some cost savings, we do have some items that we can bring to the table.
At this point in time, I think we need to vet those, as soon as you're able to get that to us, we'll vet that through the commission, you and BKV, to make sure we're all on the same page on the options for cost reductions. Does that sound reasonable to the commission? When would you like that information? Yesterday? As soon as you can provide it to us, I think would be appropriate, at least we can distribute it or send it to Stacy and she can distribute it and then we'll have to have a meeting to decide.
I do think it's important to include Bart and the sheriff and Dave, that conversation as well, because the functionality can't be impeded.
All right, so as soon as you can get us that information, we'll have Stacy distribute it.
That, that sounds fine, no later than a week from today.
Okay, and then we may end up with a phone conference again to vet those.
Perfect.
Cost reductions. Any other questions? Any other comments from you gentlemen? Any comments from the sheriff's department? That's the quietest Marty's ever been.
Yeah, the
Duly noted.
We did do a little bit of math, one thing that is kind of interesting, almost $1.6 million of this project is local contractors.
Yeah.
And that's always nice to know, sitting in there.
There are locals that were successful bidders. Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any other questions before we move into executive session? If not, I'm looking for a motion to move into executive session. Motion made in second, if all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, we are moving into executive session.
In accordance with one SDCO 125 to four contract negotiations.
Thanks, guys.
Duly noted.
Thank you.